Right, the hour of six o'clock having arrived, I'll call to order the meeting of our common council for Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-four, clerk. Very good. Now please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation offered by Alder Weary.
Huh? You wanna see this? That's the picture of the council.
Okay, this, this is our former alder Mark Steyer.
It's live.
You can please be seated for this.
What is big?
It's kind, it's kind of fitting, Elder Steyer, former Elder Steyer is on here because this is an homage to Elder Scanlon, Elder Steyer, who, who loved poetry and Mark usually wrote his own. I don't, but I'll read one. This was from one of my mom's books. She loved Hal and Steiner Rice, so I found it and I thought it would be appropriate. It's a thankful heart. Take nothing for granted, for whenever you do, the joy of enjoying is lessened for you. For we rob our own lives much more than we know when we fail to respond or in any way show. Our thanks for the blessings that daily are ours, the warmth of the sun, the fragrance of flowers, the beauty of twilight, the freshness of dawn, the coolness of dew on a green velvet lawn, the kind little deeds so thoughtfully done, the favors of friends and the love that someone unsoundly, unselfishly gives us in a myriad of ways, expecting no payment and no words of praise. Oh great is our loss when we no longer find a thankful response to things of this kind. For the joys and joy and the fullness of living are found in the heart that is filled with thanksgiving.
Thanks for sharing all that. Next on to approval of the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Eck. Any changes there? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Posnay, the ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda? Motion to approve made by Alder Presley, seconded by Alder DeLee. Any amendments, changes there? Alder Stevens?
I'd like to make amendment to move R after M.
Say R after M? M as in Mary? Alright, uh, is there a second for that amendment? Seconded by Alder Prophet. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Posnay, the ayes have it, the agenda has been amended, amended? And for motion to, motion to approve is amended, offered by Alder Presley, seconded by Alder Prophet. Discussion there? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Posnay, the ayes have it, the agenda has been approved, approved as amended. Next, uh, report by the mayor. Uh, just real quick, we've got, it's, uh, it's the season of lightings. We've got, uh, the Peachtree lighting over at the courthouse coming up. Um, Broadway's got a big lighting festival. Um, the, uh, festival lights out at, um, the Botanical Garden, which is always a great annual event. And then, of course, we have, um, our downtown parade, which is coming up, um, not this upcoming weekend, but the following one. So, it's a great, great time in the community to get out there to celebrate, um, the seasons, celebrate one another. And so just would encourage you all to attend. Um, that's it for me. Undo announcements. From our council. Any alders? One wants going twice. Alder Johnson?
Um, the, the only reason I'm gonna bring this up now is because I'm hopeful that the RDA probably, uh, won't see much discussion, but I do wanna commend the mayor, the administration, particularly Department of Community and Economic Development. There are a number of development agreements on there related to housing. Um, and I think it's really important to acknowledge that, um, we identified that, that crisis when we did the housing study in twenty twenty. Uh, and I'm really proud of the way that our staff has stepped up to, to bring us, um, proposals to look at that address housing needs across the spectrum. And, and it's not just one area, it's, it's everywhere and, and we're doing it, uh, with, with, with really good volume all across the city. So really again, just don't know if those items will be pulled, but wanted to commend staff for the great work you've done there.
Appreciate that, Alder. Seconded that for sure. Um, any other comments? Alright, no recognitions and awards. Undo appointments. Got one appointment there, a reappointment for the, um, Green Bay Area Room Tax Commission, uh, motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Weary. Any discussion there? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Posnay, the ayes have it, and that, uh, reappointment has been made. Next, we have a public hearing. So this is a public hearing on a request to create a three lot certified survey map that includes public street dedication at twenty thirty-five Crestwood Springs Drive, parcel six H dash four 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 nine, twenty forty-one Crestwood Springs Drive, that's six H dash four 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 eight, twenty forty-five Crestwood Springs Drive, six H dash four 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 seven, zero Bayberry Court, six H one two four seven dash two, and zero Packerland Drive, parcel six H dash one two four seven dash three. CSM twenty-four dash fifteen, public hearing held October seventh, twenty twenty-four. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak to that item? Anyone from the public who'd like to speak to that? Any members of the public? Let the record reflect that there are no members to speak on that item, clerk. Um, next moving along to ordinances, second reading for adoption. Motion to suspend the rules and take up these items with one roll call vote, offered by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Johnson. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Posnay, the ayes have it? Alright, motion to adopt made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Prophet. Any discussion here? Seeing none, we will use the board. Alright, and those ordinances are adopted twelve zero. Um, next we're on to committee the whole for consideration and possible action on an update related to the Lambo Field lease negotiations. Alder Johnson moves, uh, to go into closed session, seconded by Alder Hankfuss. Alder Johnson, you got the language?
Council may convene in closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five subsection one, subsection A, Wisconsin statutes, per purposes of deliberating or negotiating the sale of public properties, investing in public funds, or connecting other specified public business necessary for competitive or bargaining reasons, the council will thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five subsection two, Wisconsin statutes, take action on items discussed in closed session if appropriate and to consider the remainder of the agenda.
Alright, thank you, Alder. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll use the board. Alright, that motion is adopted unanimously. Just for the public, uh, we're gonna be going into closed session. We'll be back as soon as possible, um, and then we'll be on to the, the rest of the agenda, which next is, uh, the planning commission. So I've called the order, back to order the meeting of our common council here, and, um, want to entertain a motion to return to regular order of business. Alder Johnson makes a motion to return to regular order, seconded by Alder Prophet. All in favor will say aye. Posnay, the ayes have it? Alder Johnson?
Motion to proceed as directed in closed session.
Alder Johnson makes a motion to proceed as directed in closed session, that was seconded by Alder Prophet. Any discussion? Alder Weary? Board vote? Sure, absolutely. Uh, roll call vote has been requested by Alder Weary, uh, so we will do that. Alright, and that is unanimous, twelve zero. Um, so with that, there was an amendment made to the agenda, so we're gonna go from M to R. Which is, uh, the report of the planning commission. Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Johnson. Items here to be handled separately. Item four. Any others? Seeing none others, all in favor approving the remainder of that report, will signify by saying aye. Posnay? The ayes have it, the report has been approved with the exception of item four. Your wishes on item four? Alder Stevens?
Yeah, thank you, Alder. Um, there's people from the public that would like to speak on this item, but before we move forward, opening the floor, I do have some comments to make.
Go ahead.
Okay, we are here tonight to discuss your request to amend a PUD, planned unit development located at two two six Bornhamon Street. Because of this amendment, it has become an important and sensitive matter, the proposal to establish a drug and alcohol facility in this neighborhood. While the need to support those struggling with addiction is undeniable, it essential to consider the support that Summit will bring to our community, which is the development. The neighborhood is a place for growth, safety, and unity. As we welcome new neighbors and build this part of our community, we must ensure that any addition Summit brings to this area will enhance, rather than hinder, our collective well-being. The introduction of a drug and alcohol facility raises several concerns. We must think about the potential future changes, the impact in helping with addiction from a local resource, and the overall safety and quality of life that will bring to the families and individuals. There are valid considerations that have been thoughtfully discussed. Let's work together to find a solution that supports those in need while also averting, preventing pre, the integrity and safety of this neighborhood. I feel we find that balanced solution will benefit everyone by amending the current PUD. After we hear from the residents from the neighborhood and from Allison from Summit, I po- possibly will have additional language to add to the amended PUD. Before we open the floor, I feel it is beneficial to understand why there is an amendment to PUD before us. If Director Keneer, Reneer Wig would clarify the difference between the current PUD and the reasoning for this amendment, PUD.
Alright, thanks so much for your comments, Alder, Director Reneer Wig.
Right, so there was originally a PUD on this parcel, and it's probably about twenty twenty-three years old. And looking at the PUD, it's, it's dated in a number of ways, just with definitions where things have changed from the state. But this project would have fallen under this old PUD and, and really been it, um, would have been okay to use the old PUD with the PUD, with the exception of the kitchen facilities that they're requesting to do. They're looking to cater food in right now, um, and in the future move to doing a commercial kitchen. So we looked at updating this PUD because it's really beneficial to both sides to do that, the developer and to the city. Because again, a twenty-year PUD's got a lot of old definitions in it. It allows us the ability to update it. It allows us the ability to add the things that you talked about, um, potentially adding and comments from the neighbors. So there's really not a whole lot of differences between the two, other than the updates to some of the state code.
Alder Stevens?
Open the floor.
Alder Stevens makes a motion to open the floor, that was seconded by Alder Prophet. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Posnay, the ayes have it? The floor is open. Um, just so folks are aware, this is R four, to approve the request to amend a planned unit development located at two two six Bornhamon Street. So if anyone would like to speak to that item, um, just approach the podium, state your name and address, and then, uh, we provide three minutes for comment. Would anyone like to speak?
Hello, my name's Steve Conkel. I live at one twenty Burger Street, um, about six, six, uh, houses down from Bornhamon's. I'm in support of drug and alcohol rehab facilities like the one proposed at, uh, two twenty-six Bornhamon Street. However, facility surrounded by residential single-family houses, as well as over three hundred senior apartments in Birds Creek Trail is not the right location. Last night I discovered an article dated June fifth, twenty twenty-four from NBC twenty-six news. I emailed it to all the older persons today. I hope, hope you receive that. Um, the article shocked me when I found out Summit was turned away in Hobart after many residents spoke out of concern for safety, privacy, and property values. Excuse me. Hobart Chief of Police Rankus gathered data from police departments near existing facilities owned by Summit. He found incidents varied from nine one one calls, disturbances, runaways or missing persons, threats of harassment, trespassing complaints, as well as arson and sexual assault. With this being the case and, and recently discovering this, we had a Zoom meeting last night. I didn't, I didn't know this prior to that. Um, I discovered it afterwards, the article from NBC twenty-six. Um, with that being the case, I, I do approve the, I oppose the approval of the facility, given the location. At minimum, um, what I would request right now, I think the vote should be tabled and there should be more neighborhood awareness, um, more involvement from the neighborhood, more discussion on it, um, before, before the vote is, is revisited. So that's what I would ask tonight is to table it to next month. And I would also ask that the city, um, have a, a mailing list that includes more than four hundred feet from the, from the site. I live four hundred and sixty feet away. When I look out my kitchen window, I can see the facility, but I wasn't informed. I didn't get a lot. So I don't know, five block radius, something like that, which would, you know, incorporate more people into the discussion, more feedback, more ideas. Um, I think that's all good ideas. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for, we got a couple of questions from alders, uh, Alder Presley then Alder Galvin. Alder Presley first, Alder.
Thank you, May. Um, thank you for your testimony. Uh, I did see the article that you sent, um, and I, I did see that that police chief had mentioned that there were uh, different crimes reported at that, uh, or around locations owned by Summit. Um, I, I didn't get the sense from the article, however, that these were reported at a higher rate than in different areas of the cities, um, or that they were uniquely tied to those facilities. Did, I mean, have you seen more on that? Did you get a different?
Um, the article does say when he investigated the properties of Summit, that it was, these were specifically tied to Summit.
Okay.
That's, that's, that was my understanding of it.
Alder Galvin?
Thank you, your honor. That was gonna be my question too. Um, if, if there's actual any connection to these incidents, um, we have a number of facilities, uh, like this. A lot number of facilities like this in Green Bay, some of them downtown, most of them near residential areas. I don't recall any issues with any of these facilities, including, uh, the mental health center on the far east side, the Brown County Jail, where individuals are released from those facilities on a daily basis, um, to walk back into town and get a bus and get back where they belong. So I'm just, um, I'm just hoping we're not throwing out, you know, the baby with the bathwater here, because we have a report from a police chief, but we can't verify whether, how many of those incidents were actually related to residents from these facilities.
I, I appreciate that, and I had spoken to you on the phone. I had the pleasure to speak to you, and you actually suggested that I reach out to the police to do that, and I never did do that, unfortunately, right? So then, eh, to your question, I don't know the answer because I just found, my girlfriend actually phoned the article last night. We had phoned one article, which just kinda talked high level. And then after the Zoom meeting, she said, I wonder if there's anything else out there. And she phoned the NBC twenty-six, um, article, which went, uh, more in depth than, than the previous article, to the point where, you know, uh, Police Chief Rankus did investigate it. Now, I haven't had, I had to work today unfortunately, and I, I didn't read that till eight, nine o'clock. I sent it to older person Stevens last, I think it was last night or early this morning, but I've had really very little time to look into it. And I guess that's kinda my point is, especially with this, we, we had a lot of neighborhood concerns. We have a lot of, like I said, over three hundred senior citizens within a football field, um, distance of the facility. Um, so that was the initial concern. But as far as this goes, we haven't had much time to look any further into, and that's why I urge the, the council to at least table this for, for a period. I know in, in Hobart, they went May, June, July. You know, and then I believe Summit pulled out in July, like the article states, Summit, I think, pulled out like July. So it was over a period of time
Sure.
where this, from my first knowledge of this, which was from my neighbor, who lives two hundred feet away, to now has been, today is three weeks that I've even been aware of this, you know, going on.
Alright, well, I appreciate the fact you're willing to take a longer look at it.
Yeah. Thanks. Yeah, Alder Prophet?
Thank you for coming and for your testimony tonight. So you had ended your comments by saying you wish for us to table this to get more awareness out in your neighborhood, which I can absolutely appreciate. I live right next to one of these facilities and I was not given that notice. So I can absolutely appreciate where you're coming from with that. Um, outside of spreading awareness, are there any specific things that you are taking issue with and what is being proposed?
Beyond the bringing awareness, I, I guess really it's a, it's a dive into if this is a good fit, you know, it's a, if it's a good fit with the surrounding community, with the seniors, um, there's really no representation of the seniors here. We did do a petition, we got over a hundred signatures, very few of them. I think four of them are from the seniors because I, I don't actually know the rules or laws, but I didn't go into the facilities and push buttons and, and try to get people to come down if I saw them outside smoking. I explained, hey, this is what's, you know, what's being proposed, you know, do you support it or oppose it? Um, but most of the seniors, to be honest, I don't even think they know about it. As far as I know, they didn't get any letters, and there's over three hundred of them. If you look at the map, there's dimensions, which is literally right across the street, which I would estimate about fifty, uh, units. And then Parkway landings, the, some of the tenants told me there's two hundred and twenty units there. And then there's also a, a dis- disability housing down the, uh, across the field from them. So I estimate it to be right around three hundred seniors within three hundred, two hundred and fifty yards at least.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Alders, Mayor, um, Scott Martell. I, I reside at nineteen oh four Dekner, um, and like Steve was saying, um, I can see the facility from my, my living room, but I didn't get a notice because I'm, I'm much farther than that four hundred feet, so to that community.
So would you mind just pulling the mic a little bit?
Sorry. So, so again, to that community awareness point, um, it, it would be nice for more people to be able to put more eyes on, so we can find better solutions to some of these hit issues. So actually, so in an effort to work with the facility and find that balance that meets both their operational needs and the community's safety concerns, um, I would like to make a request that, um, or if we could possibly restrict the entry and exit times, from my understanding, they're free to come and go, um, kind of as they please. Um, that raises a lot of late night safety concerns, early morning concerns. There's a lot of children that are walking to Preble early out in the morning. Um, I would recommend at nine PM to eight AM locked door, we could call it a curfew time, um, due to the facility's proximity, um, to the residential neighborhood. And then additionally, those restrictions could help to minimize some of those disruptions, um, and provide a more controlled environment for the, the clients that are, they're trying to serve. Um, and again, this is, is to try to find that balance so that we can get people the help they need while protecting our families and, and the community that we live in. Um, I also had an idea for, kinda like a points-based system, for, um, to, to the point of the, the, the question raised, um, about the facility itself causing more of those problems. Um, if we could have some sort of like points-based system for any incidents that are directly related to that facility, kinda, I, I was thinking kinda like your driver's license. You drive five miles over, you get a point. You drive a hundred miles over, you lose your license. So depending on how that is negatively impacting the immediate community, we could potentially have some kind of system in place, um, that would, would allow some sort of, of control for how the facility is being operated and minimizing some of that impact. Um, I actually have a, uh, kind of just a, a, a little workup that I did very quickly this afternoon, um, kind of outlining some of that.
Right, any, uh, well first, um, just on that, that last point, um, I was wondering if Director Reneer Wig or Chief Davis might be able to just talk about nuisance properties, right? Cause we do have a system within city code that allows us to, um, you know, crack down on, on behaviors that are inappropriate, that are associated with a particular address and repercussions that are, um, that come in line with that, so. Who wants to go first? Director?
There's a two-pronged approach, really, inspection and police department. So if there are inspection-related issues, um, maintenance of the property, keeping of the grounds, those types of things, um, you can make those complaints to the city. If we get too many of those, then we bring all the parties in, right? We can, uh, there are some things we can do to increase fines and increase citations. So if we deem it a public nuisance, then things get a little bit harsher for you if you're an owner. But we normally work with the police department as well. I think your concerns are probably more police-based, right?
Correct.
With regards to potential for residents, that type of situation. I'll let the chief handle how we handle those for multiple police calls.
Sure, it's a similar process for police calls. So if there's enough, uh, qualifying calls within a designated period of time, then our community policing folks will go, uh, will issue them a, a property referral letter. And the goal is to try to sit down with whoever is responsible for the property and work out an abatement plan. Eventually it can, we can get the city attorney's office involved if we need to and, and take, basically shut the property down. That's pretty rare. Um, but qualifying calls would be things like disturbances or fights, um, those kinda things. Things that don't qualify would be domestic violence incidents, obviously, because we don't wanna move domestic violence survivors out of housing, uh, that kinda thing.
Um, thank you both for that. Uh, question from our alders, our guest? Alder Presley?
Um, so you mentioned the safety of the neighbors. What are your concerns with safety, um, from this behavioral health facility?
Um, and, and again, that, that stems from my understanding that, that it is a voluntary stay and that they would be able to leave it anytime that they want. So, so say you get into an altercation with a staff member or another resident at nine thirty at night, and you decide, screw this, I'm done. And, and then they walk out. Now they're, they're in a residential neighborhood. It's late at night and they're angry. Um, you don't know what that's gonna do. I've got two small children, um, in, in three and four K. My neighbors have three small children. There, there's a lot of, of kids in the neighborhood, and that's not something that they need to see or be exposed to. Um, and, um, to, to the chief's point of, of having the nuisance calls and, and all that, it, I guess what I'm after is a little bit more transparency on what that looks like. Because yes, we have these things in place, but after a time, what does that mean? How, how long can some of these things go on and be detrimental? And how long are we gonna put children and other people potentially in harm's way before those, those, um, repercussions become severe enough to, to make them change policy and procedure on how they're operating the facility?
Thank you. Any other questions? Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Alison Daniel. I live at twenty-seven eighty-two Continental Drive in Green Bay. I am here to represent Summit. I am the CEO of Willow Creek Behavioral Health on the far east side. And I'm the Wisconsin Market CEO that has oversight of our sister hospital in Middleton and an outpatient day treatment clinic in Pewaki. Uh, we held our initial neighborhood meeting, um, for the city's direction in, on October twenty-second. We were at the planning meeting last week, and after that planning meeting, we had a request for additional um, conversation from the community members that were there. So we held a Zoom meeting last night, short timeframe from the planning committee and today. Um, we had basically the same people at the first neighborhood meeting as we did last night. So although I understand they have signatures, we have not had any other participants to have the conversation. But what I do wanna do is address a couple of the questions. Yes, we are a voluntary program, but that does not mean they come and go at whatever time they want throughout the day. They are residents with us for approximately thirty days, twenty-eight to thirty-five is your average length of stay. These residents don't leave the property unless they're escorted by staff. So it's not a curfew component where they come in, do a couple of groups, run a grocery store, come back and later. No, they live there. This is where they stay. Our facilities have a system called Observe Smart that is an electronic monitoring of every single resident in that building at a minimum of every fifteen minutes. So we have eyes on that patient and electronic record of eyes on. So we have eyes on that patient and electronic record of eyes on that patient resident every fifteen minutes. If they leave our property, it's with a staff member who continues to have eyes on that individual anytime that they're gone. Our properties have security cameras inside and out. The P U D, really the goal is for us to be able to get up to county code. Two thousand and one was a very long time ago. Things have changed. So getting the language up to date as we renovate the building and getting the building up to date so that is appropriate, is really what we're looking for. And then the catering service, so that if the kitchen, which is part of the old nursing home part, isn't renovated prior to the first phase one, we would be able to cater and versus trying to cook on the property. I want to speak to the police report from Hobart real quick. So what Hobart Chief had done was he contacted random Summit facilities, the chiefs of police in those areas to ask if there was any additional calls, et cetera. He did not call apples to apples. This is a one hundred percent voluntary S U D, substance use disorder. There was a combination in this report of involuntary programs, acute psychiatric hospitals. They just called a random number. We don't know which ones they called, but the chief did share that it was just a random picking of whoever got back to him, quite honestly. So as far as that, I would encourage you to recognize that this is people choosing to come to the facility to get help with their addiction. We will be partnered very closely with Willow Creek. So individuals who have a mental health component, in addition to their substance use, will get either medical detox and/or their mental illness stabilization before they would transition to this type of a program. Are there any questions I can answer?
Any questions from council? Oh, yeah. Alder Hinkus.
So this is considered an this is considered an inpatient?
Correct, inpatient residential services.
Inpatient residence, so you don't do any outpatient?
Not at this site.
Not at this site. And you talked about Willow Creek. So you do mostly mental health there, not substance abuse?
Willow Creek does primary mental health, dual diagnosis, which is a primary mental health and a secondary addiction. And then we also do medically managed detox. So those patients are going through the immediate withdrawal symptoms of detox and needing that medical support. They would get that detox at Willow Creek before they would come to this facility if they were actively using.
Okay, and so you're using a lot of the providers. What type of staffing will be at the C B R F?
So we will have psychiatric providers, so psychiatrists and psych nurse practitioners. We'll have therapists, substance abuse counselors, nursing around the clock, behavioral health associates around the clock to help individuals throughout their programming. And this is seventy days a week. So it's not a matter of everybody goes home and there's one person walking the halls. We staff so that we have eyes on every fifteen minutes, twenty-four hours a day.
Any other questions?
I know you mentioned twenty to thirty days. People are typically there. At what success rate are you seeing people actually stay those amount of days versus two weeks in saying, I'm done with this, I'm leaving?
So we don't have one of these facilities in this area and it certainly is going to differ very much based on the population that you're serving. I could tell you that I could get you estimates, but for exactly what type of completion program at this site, we don't know yet. Our other sites that have primarily voluntary or are one hundred percent voluntary say in that ninety, ninety-seven to ninety-nine percent success rate of completing the thirty days.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So are there any other questions? Thanks so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public would like to speak? We don't entertain questions from the gallery, unfortunately, so. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, everyone. My name is Troy Main. I'm an attorney with the Dewitt Law Firm, the Madison office, twenty-five West Main Street, Madison. I have been representing Summit and helping them with some of their citing issues, both in Hobart and here in Green Bay. And I just wanted to speak to a couple of topics. I think the director raised a few of the points that I wanted to make earlier. But since Hobart came up, I wanted to just briefly talk about that. I do want, we're not here to talk about Hobart, other than it's been raised. That was a very unique residential facility. And if you've read the article, you know it was kind of an unusual sort of site. And and I think you should know that there was no denial at Hobart that at some point in time, Summit made a decision that withdrawing its application and maybe seeking a location that was better suited might be a good idea for a variety of reasons, which I think brings me to the other thing I wanted to emphasize, which the director brought up as well. I mean, I think that's exactly what we have at the Bornhaman site. We have a P U D for a that expressly authorizes, you know, C B R F uses, community living arrangement type uses. These are buildings that were built for that purpose. These are, this is a zoning category that at this point allows for that purpose. We met with the city staff. We've, you know, participated in the process. As the director said, because there's kind of a two-way street. It helps the city and it helps our organization as well. So I think we just kind of wanted to point that out that, you know, we think this is a good location because there was previously a C B R F that was located there. There's a difference. One was a senior housing facility. This one is a drug and alcohol residential treatment facility. From our standpoint, we think those are both appropriate health uses and this is the right site for the location. So I can answer any other questions that anyone else might have.
Anyone have questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to close the floor made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Prophet. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
What was the last habit? The floor is closed. Alder Stevens?
The system is new, so. I wasn't here last time. Can hear myself. And thank you for everybody that came out and had a discussion on this this evening. It's greatly appreciated. But we have to do realize we currently have a current P U D on here. Summit may take possession. If we vote yea or nay on this, you know, they can still move forward. So if any Alders have any discussions they'd like to talk about, let's talk about it, so.
Alder Johnson?
Director Bernier-Wigg, just because the, you know, this point had been brought up and we, of course, hear this from time to time when these requests come before us. The four hundred foot requirement that's established by state statute, is that correct?
That's a planning department or that's a plant commission policy?
Does the state statute, though, have a limit threshold for P U Ds per notification?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so.
We choose to do that.
And the, and that goes to the property owner versus the resident, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and it's really because we don't know who the residents are, right? Unless they're the same person?
Right, we do the mailings. We do the mailings to the owners of the properties and ask that they share that. We place a sign on that property in hopes that if you don't get a letter and know about it or you're further away, you can see it as well. We do posts on social media. We do, of course, the notice in the press gazette. So we try to get the word out, but.
Okay, and then the two community meetings that were hosted. I know initially, at least one was by recommendation of the planning department. The second one really came, I think, at the urging of Alder Stevens, if I'm not mistaken. But those are not required, right? Those are above and beyond.
I think they're, we asked them to do that, but they're really not required.
Yep, okay.
Policy.
Okay, and then, and again, I think this was alluded to a little bit, but I think it's worth restating that the P U D, as it exists today, does allow this use, is that correct?
That's correct. Looking at the original P U D, again, it's dated. It's got some old language in it from the state, but it does allow community living arrangements, C B R Fs.
So really, the only action today, if there are any amendments to be offered, you know, or the review of the plant commission, right, and the edits recommended by staff, really just makes it stronger and better.
Correct. That's the reason why we encourage it, because we could clean it up as well and add those kitchen facilities and catering services to this.
Okay, and again, I think it's just worth clarifying, right? Like, they're really not asking for permission to do this because they already have it under the existing P U D. This just makes it function better for that neighborhood right now.
Right, I think we do need to update it with regards to, again, that kitchen and catering situation. But that's pretty small compared to all the other things that are in this document.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alonzo, Alder Presley?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Chief Davis. I know, putting you on the spot, maybe. But do you get a sense that there is an increased rate of crime or violent crime around the facilities that do exist in the city? I know we said with comparing Summit properties, we're maybe comparing apples to oranges.
So just at the high level, with facilities like this, it really depends on the operator of the facility and how well we're able to work with them. I know that there is a facility out on Ontario Road and we had a conversation with our staff today about this. And what they're telling me is that that facility is pretty easy to work with from a police standpoint, that when we need to get a hold of them, we can. If there are issues, we can, they've had a history of being pretty easy to work with. There are, you know, just looking back in history at the Ontario Road facility, yes, there are lots of records in our system. I show two hundred and thirty-one event results since probably twenty fifteen, which is a little misleading because some of these are the same incident, just, you know, three or four different entries for the same incident. But just that number alone, you really can't draw conclusions. A lot of these are things like, you know, these facilities tend to be mandatory reporters of things like abuse. And so a lot of these are calls that you would expect to have and that you would want to have if they're experiencing these things. What, just from my team's analysis that we were able to do when we became aware this was coming up this afternoon, it sounds like we really don't have a lot of recent disturbance history or anything like that at the facility out on Ontario. You know, some of these things are traffic accidents in the neighborhood that aren't even connected to the facility. So long way of saying it really just depends. And you can't say that just because there's this number of police records that that's even necessarily a bad thing. We have schools with hundreds of calls for child abuse. Well, we want people to report that to us. That's not a nuisance, so. Not a super high confidence estimate I can give you to compare a facility out on the east side that is going to be a little different than the one that's proposed, but I don't see any super big red flags here.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Any other comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm on the plant commission. That was the lone no vote taken last week. And my no vote was not based on procedure. It was based on communication. I heard the speakers, some of the same people here. And this isn't the only project this happens on. I'm wondering if we can learn from this and somehow take that four hundred feet, look in a plan map, and then if there are large facilities with many people right next to the four hundred feet, if they cannot be notified or signed place in the front of the building or something. Because what I've heard the developers say has consistently addressed concerns stated by people. But not all the people apparently are there. That's frustrating to me. But at the same time, there were some good hard questions asked and there were answers given that didn't pale. They weren't like made up. They were trying to answer the question. So like safety, they're gonna, we can have extra lights, we can have video outside, the fact that the people are going to have wrist monitors. I think this is all addressing to some extent concerns. Now, you know, children next in the neighborhood, that's concerning, but the facility is already there and it's just waiting to be developed. Apparently, it's abandoned right now to some extent. And people who have been in the building said there are people possibly getting in there and not not legally, they're just there. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what was stated. So the existing site condition is not currently safe. So something's going to have to be done. So after hearing the meeting last night on Zoom, I was, I attended that. I'm literally on the fence. The new information brought up tonight about the other police department investigating, it's troublesome in two regards, one of what was brought up, but also how pertinent is it? Is, are these facilities similar to what that facility is going to be? Because that facility that has been described is pretty well maintained. It's not like people are there and then they're not being accounted for. They're being accounted for every fifteen minutes. So I think the ideas brought up are good regarding, do we want to limit the timeframe in and out? Sounds like we don't need to, but maybe we want to look at that. But we do need these facilities in our city. We just need them. There's so many people that have addictions that are wanting a way out. These are people who want a way out. So I'm kind of leaning towards approving this with the additional conditions.
Thanks, Alder. Other comments?
I, I'm just looking for a clarification because my understanding is the this project is moving forward. It's already approved for this particular use. It's just a matter of the conditional use permit for the kitchen renovations or things like that with the actual building. So I just want, you know, I want to make sure that that's actually factual.
Yeah, and that Director Bernier-Wigg, anything else to add?
I really don't. I mean, we would prefer the P U D be passed the way that it's written now in the updated form with the extra provisions in it. But as I've been told by the planners, the old P U D actually allows the C B R Fs and the CLAs in the P U D, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Alder Presley for a second time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm on board with approving this. I think as Alder acting director Bernier-Wigg brought up, regardless of whether or not we approve it, it is going to go forward, but we have extra updated language if we approve it. That makes sense to me. I think this is a facility that is going to be needed and it is a voluntary facility. And I want to remind the public of that, that this is people who want help going in to seek help. Anecdotally, I used to work for a security company at a hospital and there is a big difference between people who self-admit who want to come in and get help for the problems that they face, behaviorally or addiction related, than people who are brought in in handcuffs. And even the people who brought in handcuffs are not really that bad. I was once kicked in the face, but that was actually by an old woman. I don't want to mischaracterize, though, the residents of this facility as being necessarily or even statistically dangerous to the community. It is statistically more likely that you're going to have dangerous individuals around a liquor shop than you are at a behavioral health facility. So I just want to make sure that we're not mischaracterizing people seeking help as people who are not also going to be, you know, part of a great asset to our city.
Thank you. Thanks, Alder. Alder Morgan?
I would like a little clarification. You say it is approved for a C B R F. Is this fall into that category? I mean, it's actually rehabilitating people that have issues. A C B R F, I've always thought was where you could have elderly residents stay there and they're taken care of. They don't have the issues that a lot of these people have. So does actually this fall into that category?
So the applicant really submitted for the property for a community living arrangement, which is the C L A, which allows three or more adults not related to the operator to reside in the facility. So it's really not the C B R F, it's the, it's the C L A.
The way this is written now, a C L A would pass?
Yes, the original, the original P U D. Yes, the original, the original PUD states that a community living arrangement shall be permitted in accordance with the state statutes that it, statutes that it's listed. We've amended that just to clarify community living arrangements to the updates that were made in the state code.
Thank you.
So there. Anything else? Alder Stevens?
All right. Thank you, everybody, for that discussion. There's two things that have taken away from this is security seems to be a major issue with the residents over there. So if it's possible, I would like to amend or improve on this PUD. There's four items I was thinking about, but two of them I think we're going to possibly move forward with. There's additional lighting at the property and the focus on security cameras. Talked to the attorney previously and Cheryl. Lighting right now in the PUD, it's basically on what the current code exists, but we can improve on that. We can add and ask for additional lighting. So I would ask that we do additional lighting at all entrances and extra exit points as approved by the zoning administrator. Regarding security cameras, I think it would be us to focus on to make sure that there are exterior cameras located throughout the grounds. And those are my two items that I like to put on the.
Okay, Alder, Alder Stevens makes that amendment. It was seconded by Alder Johnson. Any comments either from Director Renee Wig or Attorney Bungar? Is that specific enough for us? Okay. Great. Uh, so there's amendment made, second discussion on that amendment. Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Close nay. The ayes have it. The amendment has been adopted. Motion to approve as amended was made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Johnson. Discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Close nay. The ayes have it, and that motion is approved. All right. Thanks so much to our guests for the, for the input there. We are now on to report of the redevelopment authority. Motion to approve made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Hankfuss. Any items to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Report of the Improvement and Services Committee? Motion to approve made by Alder Presley, seconded by Alder DeLee. Items here to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Protection policy? Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens and seconded by Alder Johnson. Items here to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it, and that report has been approved. Next is Protection Policy Committee granting operator licenses. Motion to approve by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder DeLee. Names here to be handled separately or abstentions? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it. Next would have been Plan Commission, but we already dealt with that. Finance Committee? Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Johnson. Items here to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. Close nay. The ayes have it, and that report has been approved. Next is Report of the Park Committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet and seconded by Alder Johnson. Uh, looks like we have someone here who would like to speak on. Sounds good. Uh, Alder Eck makes a motion to handle one and two separately. Seconded by Alder DeLee. All in favor of the remainder of that report will signify by saying aye. Close nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of items one and two on the park committee. First item is to approve the request by Selcom to return a hundred thousand dollars donated to the city, initially intended for the Bay Beach shoreline improvement project. The other one related to this, item two, to approve accepting a donation from Selcom for the installation of public wifi infrastructure and fifty months of free public wifi service valued at a hundred thousand dollars. So it was pulled by Alder Eck.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to open the floor.
Alder Eck moves to open the floor, seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it. Floor is open.
Mayor, uh, Alders, some of you may know me. I'm Dave Charles. I'm the president of the Friends of Bay Beach. And we've been working for years to develop the beach and raise money. I think we're a little north of twelve or fourteen million now. Things are going really well. So I know.
Just your address, sir.
Oh, my ad, my home address is fifty-eight forty-five North Shore Acres. But anyway, I know you're running behind. You had the big meeting, so we'll try and get through this quickly. Uh, it's really simple. We would like to request that relative to giving back the hundred thousand dollars which Selcom donated to Bay Beach and is now trying to back out of, um, we would request a simple no vote on the return. And this would also request a no vote on the installation of the internet services with the five thousand dollar a year annual fee. The Friends of Bay Beach met, we looked at it, we talked about it, and we really believe that if we start opening up a lot of these issues to going back two, three years, it sets a horrible precedent and it makes it very difficult to raise funds. You know, I don't know what the situation with Selcom is, but between the cancellation of the other event and asking for this back, it just seems to be an issue. At the Park Department meeting, there was some conversation about this big pool of money that's sitting around and not being used. And maybe they should get a hundred thousand of it. I can tell you, and I'm sure Park and Rec can go through all the things that we have to do there. And between the pier and the boardwalk and a number of the current issues, there's no surplus of cash. In fact, you know, as you may or may not be aware, there still is four million dollars worth of debt that we need to clean up on that thing. So we want to make sure that we can complete this project with the funding we have. The two point five million that we were fortunate enough to get, uh, will help with the pier, but I'm pretty sure that pier is gonna look more like, you know, three and a half or four million dollars. And so there just is no slush fund. Relative to this whole internet installation, you know, that's sort of a political thing you guys got to figure out. From the Friends of Bay Beach standpoint, you know, I think just about everybody in the brotherhood has a cell phone, has internet on it. So for ninety days a year to install internet at the park and then spend five thousand bucks, which could be much better spent than another of other things, I would really hope we don't consider doing that and getting that done. And for what it's worth, we did look at it. And again, we checked and got a quote of twenty-two thousand bucks to do the installation and about six hundred bucks a year to maintain it. If somebody really wanted to do that, but again, I would hope that we get a no vote there. Just sort of a fact, I mean, this thing sort of i- is a bit of an irritant. Selcom already took a write-off on this donation. They made this, you know, three years ago. And so the federal government, the state governments all subsidize that by giving them a, a nice deduction for this loan. And so to kind of ask back that money seems to be an issue. And then as I'm aware, in the history of the city, nobody's ever welched on one of these donations and said, give me my money back three years later. And so this is just something we got to be really careful with. I mean, we've raised two and a half million this year. We got the, the new handicap accessible playground. We got the new transport train. We got the new, one of the best restroom facilities ever built in a public municipality for taking. I don't want to go back to these people in three years and they say, I changed my mind. Could I have some money back? So please be careful if you, you know, start looking at that. Last but not least, the park has this bond that we're trying to pay off and the Friends of Bay Beach is absolutely committed. I know Park Department is, I know Mayor is, and we just don't have room to get rid of four and a million dollar, four million dollars worth of debt and start giving money back. So that's a big one. Sorry, I got a little long-winded. I'm passionate about the park. I'm passionate about what it does for the community, the youth of the community, the families, being able to go there and do this. So yeah, I'm absolutely irritated by a Green Bay company that, you know, does everything they're doing, coming back and going, yeah, could we have our hundred thousand back that we gave a few years ago? So please, would you do everything possible to protect Bay Beach and make sure that these fundings there to go ahead and do that? And please vote no on both of those. Thank you very much. And if there's anything I can do to help or answer, I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Yes, uh, this is Mick O'Malley.
Great. Yeah, if you could just state your name and address for us and then go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so my name is Mick O'Malley. I'm a Director of Government Relations and Sustainability at Selcom. And my address is two five nine two South Webster Avenue in Green Bay. And, um, so on January second, two thousand nineteen, Selcom donated one hundred thousand dollars to the Bay Beach Swimming Beach Restoration Project. The company had accumulated funds over many years through our phone recycling efforts, funds that continue to be donated, uh, through our green gifts program to this day. In fact, twenty twenty-four awards included a gift to the City of Greenvee, Green Bay Conservation Corps. At that time in two thousand nineteen, we had a very successful recycling program and we hoped to find a project that could use a more substantial gift. We wanted to give to something that would benefit a wide variety of people in our region. We are different from our competitors in that we take recycling income and turn it right back to our communities to fund green initiatives and programs rather than using it in our own operations. We use those dollars to grow the good in our communities. We provided the one hundred thousand dollar gift to the City of Green Bay for the restoration of a swimming beach, a record-breaking contribution for us at one time. To us, this was a prime project where our community was making a big step towards clean water in the bay and would provide an asset to be used by people throughout our service area as the beach amusement park is a regional and even a national attraction. We felt this was a very exciting gift, uh, give back to the community. The project focus has evolved since the gift was made back in two thousand nineteen. The recently awarded two point four million federal grant will be going towards building a pier and improving the paved trail that is along the shore. We don't want to diminish the value of this community project. However, what most closely aligned with Selcom's goal of improving water quality has been tabled. Over the last year, we've been working with the city to see if we could broaden the scope of the Bay Beach amusement park shoreline restoration project and provide a benefit to the local community with the money that would be donated back in two thousand nineteen. After thinking outside the box, a problem to be solved came to light. A wifi system across the entire property would be a benefit to anyone who visits the park. Especially because the area on the bay and it's not well served by cellular service in general. The City of Green Bay has expressed interest in public wifi networks in other city parks, so we knew it is a highly sought-after service. Deploying the new public wifi network will connect Bay Beach amusement park visitors to the internet. Users will be able to attach the public wifi network when they arrive and be taken to a Bay Beach amusement park landing page. Visitors will be able to use their handheld devices with ease to stay connected to the internet and communicate with friends and family. Above and beyond the wifi initiatives, uh, but connected to it, we have offered early-stage ideas that could incorporate sensors in the water, extending upon the network we deployed with the University of Wisconsin, Green Bay, that has gotten national attention. Such a system would provide year-round, real-time monitoring data to guide knowledge on the health of the potential beach water, how it trends over time and how it's impacted by storms, runoff seasons, and ecosystem activity. This data would be immensely helpful in progressing towards a swimming beach someday and speaks to the original hope and use of the donation towards environmentally focused projects. In order to broaden the scope of the shoreline project by adding the public wifi element, the city will return the one hundred thousand dollar gift to Selcom and then we will implement the agreed wifi project at the same level of monetary value. Selcom will donate project costs, including hardware, software, and contractor costs at a value of seventy-five thousand dollars. Selcom will also donate internet access and system management at a cost of twenty-five thousand. And this includes the five hundred per month for fifteen months of service. So there is actually no cost to the city for this service for the first fifty months. After that, the city can decide what it wants to do and, uh, go from there. If we proceed with, with real-time monitoring of water quality, it's an even bigger, grander commitment above and beyond the one hundred thousand dollar donation. So this is a win-win-win project for everybody. The efforts of partners, uh, Selcom and City of Green Bay and caretaking our company's groundbreaking one hundred thousand dollar donation is an excellent example of how we partner with communities. Again, we're not diminishing the value of the city's shoreline restoration project. But we do look forward to, um, approval for our, um, uh, plan. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks so much for your testimony, sir. Any questions for Mr. O'Malley? Uh, Alder Prophet?
Thank you for providing your testimony this evening. I just wanted to piggyback off what you mentioned. So it, it kind of seems like this stemmed from the two point four million donation to the pier that, that moved away from the swimming beach restoration. Is that, am I understanding that correct?
Yes, the, the focus of the project, um, again, we don't want to diminish the, um, value of the project to the community. However, the focus of the project i- it changed. So it shifted away from a sustainability focus to, um, you know, more of a kind of a improvement focus. Again, not to, um, you know, diminish the impact of the project, uh, in its new form, but it changed.
Okay. And then one other follow-up question. So you mentioned, um, the deployment of monitoring the water quality on the shoreline. Is that included in our proposal or did that already go through a different process?
No, that would be separate and it would not be immediate. We are working with the University of Wisconsin, Green Bay on a, um, you know, Green Bay, um, water quality monitoring, um, system. And we've funded the deployment of that system, uh, from a wireless connectivity standpoint. And so that would be our plan here as well. But no, it's not included in this initial proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? All right. Thanks again, Mr. O'Malley.
Yep.
Anyone else either in person or on Zoom who'd like to speak to this? Motion closed floor made by Alder Eck, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor will say aye. Close nay. The ayes have it. Floor is closed. Uh, Alder Eck?
I always forget. I'm looking up here. Um, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I, I'm the Chair of Parks and originally we did, um, vote to approve the request. After the meeting, I started to, um, kind of think more about it and, um, it just didn't seem right because the money has already been donated. And I did reach out to, uh, Director Ditchite to ask some questions. In, in fact, this was going towards what was intended and, um, and he can clarify, but my, it, he, he did indicate it is. There's two phases to the project. This is phase one and part of phase two is the, the cleanup and the possible swimming beach. So it's not been tabled, but more, it's just not yet. So my recommendation, and we can let Director Ditchite speak on this. And I also had asked about, were we looking for wifi at the park? Cause I kind of look at it, to me, it's, it's a place for family to get together. And I personally don't really feel comfortable encouraging people to be on their phones while they're out, um, having family time. And so the part of the, the, the second part, um, again, I'm not in favor of it because I don't want to encourage that. So I'm gonna make a motion to deny the request by Selcom to return the hundred thousand dollars.
Alder Eck makes a motion to deny the request. Is there a second for that? Seconded by Alder DeLee. We'll go to Director Ditchite just for any comments generally. You know, Alder Eck, um, was kind of questioning the, the staging of the project. So if you just wanted to kind of update people on, on that aspect of things and anything else?
Yeah, so I know that not everyone on the city council was involved with the, with the phasing proposal for this. So, um, a few years ago, uh, it was determined we didn't have enough money to complete the entire project, which included the, the swimming beach, a bath house, uh, shoreline. uh shoreline um walkway replacement, and then also a, a pier that juts out into the bay. Uh, that was the original uh proposal when Mayor Schmidt uh went out and seeked uh donations. Uh, since we found out that there wasn't enough money to do the entire project, a few years into the project, uh, the parks or the Parks Committee and City Council approved a phasing plan. So phase one is to be uh include the installation of the pier, the shoreline walk, stormwater management, which is required. And then follow through with a debt reduction plan, which we would implement and refinance uh in twenty twenty-six. Uh, the shoreline of the beach portion of it and, and um the bath house would be phase two and it would be after the refinancing package is done. And uh, you know, after you heard from Cellcom just now, um, although when the donation was originally given, all of those components were built into it other than the refinancing. Uh, their main interest was the, was the habitat portion.
Thanks, Director. Uh, Alder Prophet on the motion.
Um, thank you, Director Ditchite. Could you possibly give us some figures for the cost of phase one and the cost of phase two? And they don't have to be exact, but just like rough numbers?
I don't have that information in front of me right now. Uh, but when we accepted the grant, um, what I can tell you is there is enough money uh between the donated money and uh the grant money to complete phase one, uh, which is the shoreline, uh, walkway, the pier, and, and then also uh continue with the refinancing. Uh, if this gets approved uh for the hundred thousand, in essence, what that means is the hundred thousand that would have gone towards the phase one and the refinancing, uh, there would be a hundred thousand dollars less in that big pot of money for all of it. Uh, simply be because, you know, wifi was not in the original uh phasing plan that was approved.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on that motion? Alder Johnson.
Director Ditchite, uh, just again, seeking a little bit more clarity around the, the phasing, right? Phase two, the intent is to, to put in a beach. Uh, do we have a sense of timing on that? And uh, I know you said you don't have the numbers, right? But is, is, is the impediment there, the funding, or is it something else permitting?
Primarily, initially, it'll be the funding, uh, because like I mentioned, what was approved by the city council was to complete phase one and spend as much money as we have remaining to pay off as much of a debt as possible when we refinance in twenty twenty-six. So come twenty twenty-six, we won't have any money for phase two available. So initially, it would be, you know, finding the funding to do it. Uh, secondly, uh, you know, the, the permit for the beaches that we received from the DNI has already expired. So that would be the next hurdle that we would have to overcome is we would have to pull another permit to install a swimming beach. So those would be the first two steps.
So up to this point though, um, and if my memory serves me right, council hasn't um come off the concept of a beach. It was just that the, the, the boardwalk and the pier were prioritized based on order of operations.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Alder Prophet for a second time?
Yeah, I just have one other comment. I just want to appreciate um Cellcom um for a moment that they did donate a hundred thousand dollars to this project. And though it might have deviated from what their initial investment was, I do still think that there's a sustainability element um with that stormwater infrastructure that was done with the pier and, and it sounds like we're still on track to put that beach in as well. So just want to recognize that they did come forward with a hundred thousand dollar donation to our city. Um, so I just want to appreciate that. But I, I'm in favor of the motion that's before us in denying um and shifting to wifi. Um, just because we need to see this project continue to move so that it sounds like that one hundred thousand dollars is vital where it's at right now.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor will say aye. O's nay? The ayes have it. And um that motion succeeds. That's a motion to deny the request by Cellcom to return the hundred thousand dollars. We're now on to item two to approve accepting a donation. Return a motion there.
Hi, can I, um, can I speak?
Uh, not as of yet, Mr. O'Malley.
Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
Alder Eck makes a motion to deny on item two. Is there a second for that? Seconded by Alder De Lee. Um, obviously hearing somebody would like to speak. Uh, Alder Weary makes a motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor will say aye. O's nay? The ayes have it. The floor is open. Mr. O'Malley, go ahead.
Hi, um, I want to, you know, thank you for your time tonight. Um, you know, we, we, we still believe that the focus of the project has um shifted and that the grant that we made over six years ago of, of a very, very large amount of money i- in our um vision um has, has shifted. And it's um, you know, w- we weren't planning and we weren't going to be charging the city anything for this. Um, and um I would, instead of having a motion um to kind of deny, um, could we instead move it back to staff and try to continue to work on this? Um, I think our um, you know, I, I don't want to go any further than that. I would, I would like to make that request if at all possible. Um.
Okay, appreciate those, those comments. Any questions from Mr. O'Malley? Alright, thanks again, sir. Motion to close the floor made by Alder Johnson and seconded by Alder Prophet. All in favor will say aye. O's nay? The ayes have it. Alder Eck made a motion to deny. Was it seconded? Seconded by Alder De Lee. Um, on that motion. Any comments or questions? Alder Johnson.
Um, a- again, recognizing that the item before us is, is, you know, what council's taking action on, but I don't think there's anything that would prohibit staff from continuing to at least have a dialogue, right? I mean, I want to make sure that I'm not misunderstanding that, but um you know, so I think regardless of the outcome, if there is more conversation, I still kind of would like to have with staff, I'd certainly invite and encourage them to do that.
Thanks, Alder. Um, Director Ditchite, any comments just on, on that? Suggest, suggestion from Alder Johnson?
No, I'm always willing to listen to suggestions and if they have an alternate idea, if this uh motion fails or succeeds and they want to have additional discussions, uh, I'll sit down with Cellcom and, and see what ideas they have.
Thanks, Director. I would obviously second those remarks as well. Happy to participate in any meetings um to, to come with, with Cellcom. Alder Johnson?
Uh, just to further clarify, Mayor, I think procedurally, we wouldn't be able to bring back the exact same motion, but my understanding is that you know, any other motion could be brought forward in the future if the, if staff and Cellcom had another proposal they wanted, but um, seems like the tea leaves are uh overwhelming in favor of what's on the floor right now.
Any other comments on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. O's nay? The ayes have it and that motion succeeds. Uh, to the report of Personnel Committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Prophet. Any items here to be handled separately? Alright, item three, any others? Seeing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report will signify by saying aye. O's nay? The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of item three. Um, your wishes on that, Alder Hinkus?
Um, in speaking with um Director Folds, we do not have it. It's not totally finished as far as the document to put out for us to be able to read the fine print. So he asked that we put it on hold um for the next meeting.
Alright, Alder Hinkus makes a motion to hold this item over until the next meeting, uh, not our budget meeting, but the, the next normal meeting of our common council. Um, and that was seconded. Next Personnel Meeting, okay. That is the motion made by Alder Hinkus and seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. O's nay? The ayes have it and that motion has been approved. Report of the Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens and seconded by Alder Prophet. Items here to be handled separately. Hearing none, all in favor will say aye. O's nay? The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Sustainability Commission. Motion to approve made by Alder Presley, um, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately. None, all in favor will say aye. O's nay? The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Equal Rights Commission. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Presley. Items here for separate consideration. Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. O's nay? The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Next, a couple of informational items, building report for October twenty twenty-four and municipal court monthly financial report for October twenty twenty-four. Those are included in the packet, uh, resolutions. Alder Prophet makes a motion to suspend the rules and take up these items with one rule called vote. That was seconded by Alder De Lee. All in favor will say aye. O's nay? The ayes have it. Rules are suspended. Motion to adopt made by Alder Prophet. Seconded by Alder Presley. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will use the board. Alright, then those are adopted unanimously. Onto ordinances, first reading. Motion to suspend the rules has been made by Alder Prophet and seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor will say aye. O's nay? The ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Alder Johnson?
Sorry, just to. Mayor, wanted to confirm if item three on Bournamen Street would automatically adopt the amendments that were made.
Good question. Uh, Attorney Bunker?
Yep. Uh, I think to, to make sure that the record is, is clearly reflected, um, as to the amendments, we should probably make the amendments to the ordinance um and adopt as amended.
Sounds good. So the suspension motion is just maybe for one, two, and four?
Yeah, I think that's what Alder Prophet meant, right?
Yeah, I think so. Alright, that motion has been made and seconded. Um, all in favor will say aye. O's nay? The ayes have it. The rules are suspended for items one, two, and four. Motion to advance made by Alder Presley and seconded by Alder De Lee. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. O's nay? The ayes have it. And those ordinances are advanced to a second final reading. We're now on um item three. Um, Alder Stevens. Yeah, make a, make a motion to amend, to add those lighting and security camera requirements.
Second.
Alder Stevens makes that motion and is seconded, seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye. O's nay? The ayes have it. That amendment is adopted. Motion to advance as amended made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder De Lee. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. O's nay? The ayes have it. And that has been advanced. No petitions and communications. adjournment. Motion to adjourn made by Alder Presley, seconded by Alder De Lee. All in favor say aye. O's nay? The ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.